Okay, one minute, Ryan, one minute. Wonderful.
He just brushed us right through when you were in your tie.
This is Texas, doesn't want to wear red and white.
Thank you.
I don't really need it now. Forty, thirty seconds, everybody, thirty.
Thirty seconds, everybody.
Okay, Ryan, five, ten seconds to go, please.
Good evening, everybody. I call this meeting of the North Adams City Council to order for November twelfth, twenty twenty-five. This meeting can be viewed live on Northern Mercury Community Television Station, channel thirteen oh three, and will be posted to their website as soon as possible. We will also be live streaming on YouTube at www.youtube.com/atNorthAdams. Just click on the live and on the twenty twenty-five dot eleven dot twelve city council meeting. And as always, these meetings are being recorded. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Blackmer, here. Bona?
Here.
Green?
Here.
Bitch?
Here.
Alessa West?
Here.
Shay?
Rossmann.
Wilkinson?
Here.
Sapienza?
Here. We have a quorum.
Please rise for a moment of silence, remember. And the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. At this time, I will now open the public hearing for Council Paper Number twelve thousand five thirty-seven dash one, Communication Number one thirty-seven, from Mayor Maxine, introducing an order for setting tax classification of local tax levy to be allocated to each class of real estate and personal property on the fiscal year twenty twenty-six. I'm going to file the communication with objection, and I'm going to turn it over to the mayor.
Thank you, President Sapienza. In the audience, we do have packets of the PowerPoint, because sometimes the PowerPoint's a little hard. And councilors, you have packets on your table. Does everybody have one? Okay, great. So I'm here tonight with our new assessors, Sierra Dowling, the Board of Assessors, Pat Wall, and Greg Betty, thank you for being here, and the financial team to make a recommendation to the city council for our fiscal year twenty-six tax rate. A lot of this will be a repeat, some of you have heard, but to get everybody up to speed, the goal of this public hearing is to adopt the tax levy percentages and residential factor to set the tax rate for fiscal year twenty-six. This is all done and required by Chapter forty, Section fifty-six of Massachusetts General Law. Based on the valuations determined by the city's Board of Assessors, we set the tax rate. And then we come to you with a proposal, and then it's enacted and voted on by the city council. So the tax rate process, as I said a little bit, is to determine the value of each parcel. The Board of Assessors does that. Then the Board of Assessors classifies all real property, which is residential, open space, commercial, industrial, and personal property, into the appropriate classes. And then we submit the total valuation to the Division of Local Services. At that point, they review all of our data and determine the minimum residential factor for the city of North Adams. And then at this point, we hold a public hearing, and we make a recommendation to the city council. And the city council sets the tax rate for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. When we look at this process, we consider a couple of things. First is the residential factor, which identifies the shift. And remember, North Adams has a split tax rate, residential and open space, and then commercial, industrial, and personal property. Once we set the CIP shift, then we can determine how we shift that up to one hundred and seventy-five percent of the residential tax rate. So this year that we're, or last year that we set the tax rate for fiscal year twenty-five, we had a CIP shift of one point seven one five with a residential factor of point eight one three eight. We had tax rates of sixteen dollars and seventy-one cents per thousand for residential and open space and thirty-five dollars and twenty-two cents for commercial, industrial, and personal property. This year, we'd like to recommend to the council that we keep the shift the same at the one point seven one five. We established the residential factor of point eight two zero two, which calculates for tax rates of fifteen dollars and ninety-seven cents per thousand for residential and open space, which is a reduction of seventy-four cents per thousand for the residential, and then a tax rate of thirty-three dollars and forty cents for commercial, industrial, and personal property, which is a reduction of a dollar eighty-two. So with this, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Assessor Dowling.
Thank you, Mayor Maxine. Thank you, city councilors, and thank you residents of North Adams for attending today's tax hearing. I would like to start providing some insight into a few phrases you'll hear throughout our presentation. So the first is certification year. The certification year has standards that require a comprehensive review and analysis of assessed values to ensure alignment with our current market. This is also known as the five-year certification reassessment year or reevaluation year. This occurs every five years and focuses on an in-depth sales analysis with DOR. And this is in addition to our monthly deed reviews. The Division of Local Services reviews these values to certify that they are fair cash value. Another term that you'll hear is cyclical year. The certification standards for a cyclical year require all real properties to be inspected at least once every ten years to verify and ensure that the property data we have on file is accurate. And all of that information is usually collected from field inspections. This is also known as the cyclical inspection program. This occurs every ten years and focuses on ensuring accurate field information. This helps ensure that all real property in the community is assessed at a fair cash value. And the last term is market value. This is the price a willing buyer and willing seller would settle upon in an open market transaction. This is also known as the fair cash value or fair market value. Determining fair cash value begins with classifying the sale of a parcel to the arm's length or not. An arm's length sale is a transaction between two unrelated parties, each of which is knowledgeable of market conditions and is under no pressure to buy or sell. The property must also be exposed to the open market for a reasonable amount of time. This occurs annually and focuses on utilizing mass appraisal procedures for property sales that are considered arm's length. All in all, the values are adjusted annually to reflect the current market conditions and regardless of whether the community is in certification year or not. I also want to note that the price of utility bills, gas prices, and groceries do not play any role in assessed values or the market value. Some examples of non-arm's-length sales are sales within a family for closure sales or donations. The years between a certification year and a cyclical year are called interim years, and they each have their own set of standards, but primarily focus on the upkeep of data and getting prepared for the next certification or cyclical year. With that being said, my role as the assessor is to ensure that all real and personal property in the community is classified by its use and that the assessment values are at full and fair cash value in an open market as of January first of each year. This process begins by reviewing deeds monthly and determining whether or not they are arm's length sales. My work and performance are monitored, reviewed, and approved by several state departments, including the Division of Local Services, the Department of Revenue, the Bureau of Accounts, the Bureau of Local Assessment, and the Bureau of Municipal Finance. In the next slide, we'll be looking at the valuation base summary from fiscal year twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-six. The parcels and values reflected in these numbers total all taxable real estate in the city, meaning exempt parcels and values are not contributing to the tax option recommendation that we're doing today. Our residential values have had a steady increase over the past four fiscal years. You will not see any values under open space as our city has not adopted that classification. Increased assessment values were caused by an increase in market, as well as it being a certification and cyclical year for the city. And it's good to note that our assessment values are driven by sales in the community, so an increase in value that is not a direct result of fiscal changes to the property means that property sales in the community are above market value. All in all, for each of these classifications, the tax base for the city went up around nine point seven percent. Next, we'll be looking at the fiscal year twenty twenty-six tax base growth summary. The numbers on this leg reflect new growth to the community inside of this year. Column A is the class of property. Column B is the allowable adjustments for the class of property. And column C is the calculated increase for the tax levy due to new growth. These numbers were calculated with the fiscal year twenty-five tax rate as fiscal year twenty-six is being decided on. New growth total is fifteen million, seven hundred and thirty-four thousand, five hundred and twenty-one dollars. New growth does not include increased assessment values. New growth only reflects changes made to a building or parcel that increases the base value of that building or parcel. Meaning, new growth adjustments are the result of interior additions or alterations, major renovations, the addition of yard items such as auxiliary buildings and pools and fences, and special features such as basketball courts, canopies, or patios. I would like to note that solar panels are yard items, but they are tax exempt in the state of Massachusetts. Next, we have a more detailed look at our fiscal year twenty twenty-six tax base growth. We received consultation from Make Now Evaluation for the cyclical slash recertification year. They focused on the real estate data in the city and conducted a total of one thousand eighty-six inspections. For single-family homes, we had other improvements, which resulted in five hundred and sixty thousand, four hundred dollars increase in our tax base. We had a single-family new construction, which was forty-seven Beasley Street. That is six hundred and eighty-two thousand, three hundred dollars to our tax base. We had four new units at Graylock Works that are a hundred percent complete, moving up from fifty percent. We have condominiums of the Graylock units, eight units that are new units that are at twenty-five percent complete. We had two and three family homes with other improvements. And we had a two and three family home that went from exempt to taxable because it was sold by NCLA. For vacant land, this means accessory land with improvements, such as yard items or auxiliary buildings. And for this land specifically, it was a storage built on accessory land on Bracewell Ave. So the residential total of new growth for the city is two million, nine hundred and sixty-two thousand and five hundred dollars, which calculates to forty-nine thousand, five hundred and three dollars and thirty-eight cents for taxes. For the CIP, we have a commercial unit that went from exempt to taxable. This was a leased unit in Mass Moca. We had a commercial new construction, which was a commercial condo at Graylock Works. We had commercial yard items, which was ninety-nine thousand, four hundred dollars, making the commercial total for the year two hundred and forty-eight thousand and fifty dollars, making the tax base growth eight thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars and eighty-four cents. And then for personal property, thanks to RRC, which is Real Estate Research Consultation Consultants, they provided us consultation for the cyclical recertification year, and they focused primarily on the personal property data, which resulted in these forty-six new accounts for one million, eight hundred and twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and ninety-one dollars. And then an increase of ten point six million for existing established accounts that just had new assets brought on. In total, bringing the personal property new growth to twelve million, five hundred and twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy-one dollars. All in all, those three groups that we have listed resulted in four hundred and ninety-nine thousand, two hundred and six dollars and twenty-three cents being added to our base. Next, we have our fiscal year twenty twenty-six residential tax scenarios. Here, we will see how our recommended residential tax rate for fiscal year twenty twenty-six compares to the tax rate we had set for last year. You can see for last year, the total residential value of the two thousand, six hundred and forty-six single-family homes in North Adams was around five hundred and ninety-six million, five hundred and thirty-four thousand, nine hundred dollars. This makes the average value of one of these homes two hundred and twenty-five thousand, four hundred and forty-seven dollars and eighty-one cents. With a residential tax rate of sixteen dollars and seventy-one cents per one thousand, the average taxable for a single-family home last year was three thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars and twenty-three cents for the full year. Looking at fiscal year twenty twenty-six, this year, the total residential value of the two thousand, six hundred and forty-four single-family homes in North Adams is six hundred and forty-four million, six hundred and sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred dollars, making the average value of single-family homes two hundred and forty-three thousand, eight hundred and twenty-two dollars and ninety-two cents. And with our recommended residential tax rate of fifteen dollars and ninety-three cents per one thousand dollars, the average tax bill for a single-family home would be three thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four dollars and ten cents per year, which would be a total increase of a hundred and twenty-six dollars and sixty-two cents from fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Next, we have our tax share options for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. These numbers are calculated on the options table by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue and shows how the CIP shift in residential factor affects each classification share percentage of the tax levy. Residential class had an original share of seventy-nine point nine zero seven eight percent, but it was decreased by fourteen point three six five nine percent, bringing it to sixty-five point five four one nine percent. The commercial original share was eleven point three two seven five percent. It was increased by eight point zero nine percent, bringing it to nineteen point four two six six percent. The industrial original share was two point zero three four three, which was increased by one point four five four five percent, bringing it to three point four eight 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 percent. And then the personal property original share was six point three, six point seven three zero four percent and was increased by four point eight one two three percent, bringing it to eleven point five four two seven percent. Next, we have the tax rate comparison for fiscal year twenty twenty-five to fiscal year twenty twenty-six. This is just to reiterate the mayor's point previously that the residential open space tax rate would decrease by seventy-four percent and the CIP tax rate would decrease by a dollar eighty-two. And then here we have our fiscal year twenty twenty-six recommendation, stated again. To recap, our recommendation is to set the CIP shift at one point seven one five percent for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. The residential factor was then be set at point eight two zero two and make the fiscal year twenty twenty-six tax rates fifteen dollars and ninety-seven cents for residential and open space and thirty-three dollars and forty cents for commercial, industrial, and personal property. Now we have a glance at the tax rates from the past ten fiscal years. You can see that our tax rates peaked in fiscal year twenty nineteen, but have had a steady decrease, bringing us to a tax rate that is lower than it was in fiscal year twenty sixteen. I have some common questions that are often brought to the assessor's office. Some of these answers I am going to read verbatim what the slide says just because of the information. The first one is, I have not made any improvements to my properties, so why did my assessed value increase? Our property sales data is the primary reason for the increase or decrease in assessed values. The properties are routinely selling over their assessed values. This indicates that our assessed value should be increased to reflect the fair market value. It is also important to note that the Department of Revenue also analyzes our sales data to make sure we are not over-assessing or under-assessing any properties. Next, we have, why aren't properties that are used as Airbnbs classified commercially and taxed at the commercial tax rate? All properties that are used for residential purposes, whether for short-term or long-term residential use, have to be classified and taxed at the residential rate. The argument is often, the owners of Airbnbs are making a profit by renting their properties. However, in a similar fashion, owners of residential properties, owners of residential apartment buildings can also make a profit by renting their properties. We cannot classify and tax an owner of residential property used as an Airbnb any differently than any other residential property owner. I believe my property is over-assessed. How do I remedy that? If you believe your property is over-assessed, you have the legal right to file for an abatement for the current fiscal year with the assessor's office from January first to the end of the business day on February second. Abatement forms are available at the assessor's office by the last week of December, but you can also request one to be mailed or emailed to you. Once you file for an abatement, the assessor will send you a letter acknowledging receipt of the application and will request an inspection of the inside and outside of your property at a mutually convenient day and time. Upon inspection, the assessor will present the abatement application inspection details to the Board of Assessors for approval. Next, we have, why doesn't Mass Moca pay, have to pay taxes? This is going to be a longer answer. For the Assessment Administration Law Procedures and Valuation Handbook issued by the Division of Local Services through the Massachusetts Department of Revenue, properties that may qualify for exemption from local property taxes include public lands and facilities, hospitals, schools, churches, and cultural institutions. Because the museum is considered a cultural institution, it is tax exempt. That being said, it is important to note that any property owner who claims that their property is a church, museum, or school doesn't automatically qualify for exempt status. The individual or organization would have to provide documentation to support the claim of a tax exempt status. The Board of Assessors would also have to review the documentation and inspect the property to approve such status. Please note that while Mass Moca is tax exempt, any time it leases any of its spaces to non-exempt entities, such as the line that we saw in the new growth detail, those spaces within Moca become taxable. Those tenants then begin paying real estate taxes on the spaces they lease. Those businesses are also subject to taxes on personal property associated with the businesses. In fiscal year twenty twenty-five, we assessed forty-three thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars and eighty-eight cents to tenants for real estate and personal property. Next, I have listed the top ten commercial taxpayers for real estate for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. I would like to note that this information only includes commercial buildings. This does not include any residential buildings or vacant land parcels. But total tax bill for last year was one million, eight hundred and ninety-six thousand, six hundred and thirty-three dollars. Question seven, we have the types of properties in the city. We have two thousand, six hundred and forty-four single-family homes, ninety-three residential condos, forty-three mobile homes and properties with multiple homes on one lot, six hundred and ten two-family homes, one hundred and eighty-three family homes, one hundred and seventy-five four-family homes, two hundred and fifty-nine commercial properties, fifty-nine industrial properties, one hundred mixed-use properties, and then two chapter sixty-one properties. I would like to note that chapter sixty-one properties are usually for forestry, agriculture, and open space or recreation. And now I will take my questions.
Okay, I'm going to open this up to the council. Counselor Wilkinson.
You mentioned solar panels earlier. Is there a difference if your solar panels are mounted on your roof? You said something about in the yard, they were tax exempt.
So solar panels in general in the assessing world are considered yard items, no matter how they're attached to the property or building, but they're tax exempt no matter how they are attached.
Thank you. Counselor Shane, then Counselor Blackman.
First, thank you for this information. It's very useful. It helps to understand what values our properties have. One thing that stuck up to me is that the industrial category went down a little bit. Can you explain why industrial went down and all the rest went up?
So industrial went down, not because we lost the industrial properties, more so they were just reclassified to mixed-use properties. One was per DOR. They requested that we change the classification because more of the parcel was being used as vacant land than an actual solar field, which is what it was, why it was considered industrial. We, so we lost a total of, lost, they were reclassed, a total of three industrial parcels. One was a parking lot for the Clark Biscuit Apartments. It wasn't industrial use, so it needed to be reclassed. One was the old Crane Stationery Building, which is now a store for Duke's Lumber. So again, not industrial, it's commercial. And then the one that was changed to mixed-use, the solar field.
Thank you.
Counsel Blackman?
Kind of a follow-up to Counselor Wilkinson's question. Residential solar panels are not considered, aren't taxable, they're not part of yard items or whatever, but a commercial solar array would be taxed at a commercial rate, correct?
If it's being used as a solar field, it's taxed, yes. But we're just talking about solar panels, like on somebody's roof or something.
Right, I just wanted to clarify. I want a clarification.
Yeah, an entire solar field is not tax exempt.
That's what I wanted to get at.
Yeah, that's why those are classified as industrial. Or those mixed use where part of it is industrial, the rest of it is residential because of land.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Bona?
Yeah. Several comments here. One, I do appreciate the slight shift in commercial and residential, but it should be noted that our commercial rate is still more than double our residential. So, you know, it wasn't always that way. I mean, there are communities that have one rate, but it just, you know, some people say this shift is putting the burden more on the residential, but it should be noted that the commercial rate is still a double commercial. Also noted that, I think, majority of the increase is when it comes to property values as residential. You know, I looked at your chart there. If you look from two thousand twenty-two into July twenty-six, residential values have increased almost forty-five percent. While commercial values have increased about thirteen percent. So, you know, I guess the question is, you know, obviously, houses are in more demand. People are paying more for single and double and multi-unit homes versus commercial values seem to be somewhat still at a standstill. And when you look at industrial values, it could be just not much is sold, but that actually has jumped up pretty much, actually looks like it even dropped a little. So, you know, that is obviously where it puts more in the residential. It just has to do more with the value of houses selling considerably more than it did a few years ago versus a commercial space is not jumped up too much. The, couple things. Do you know, did we lose any commercial properties in the past year to nonprofit? That went to non-taxable?
Commercial properties?
Yeah. I don't, I can't think of any off the top of my head. I know in previous years, we have lost buildings such as, what's that, Pitcher's Mount? Pitcher's Mount, okay. So, but, you know, take Pitcher's Mount, Nassif's, Price Chopper. And over the years, we've lost a number of buildings to nonprofits, which don't have to pay taxes on. Didn't Pitcher's Mount maybe one? That could have been almost two years ago.
Just point of clarification, the Pitcher's Mount was taxable and went to a taxable entity. Paying as a private.
So, it is taxable?
Yes.
Good. And we do have properties where there are nonprofits in that are owned by developers, such as the Green Center, is still taxable because of the ownership. You mentioned that under personal property, there was 46 new accounts created, is that what you said? Did I hear that? And can you be more specific, like what, where they? I know, like we talked about before, about, for example, short-term housing or second homes actually are supposed to be taxed. Personal property, which that number's always seems to have been low, like what we know we have for second homes, but are these commercial businesses that were not previously taxed on inventory? Or do we know what those more specific are?
I don't have specifics in front of me.
That's a good number, I'm just curious.
Follow up with you.
Yeah, just curious what those are, if they're, if they're second homes, if they're just businesses that have been missed in the past. Because that's, it's a good, good increase there for sure.
Counselor Bonner, if I may, I remember looking at the list, some of them are second homes. And then also because we had the cyclical review, we picked up, the consultant picked up a lot of accounts. So, that's all part of the review.
Yeah, well, not like I said, I knew second homes were some, but I just didn't know where the majority was. And so it just shows here, like you mentioned the one single home on Easy Street, which the new construction, I'm not sure, is that whole value, that home was valued at $683,000? Is that correct? Is that what I'm seeing there? Yeah, so, I mean, this shows one house, you know, is bringing in an additional $11,400 on Easy Street, you know? You think some, no, but you just, you know, we think some of these old streets, new development can't happen. And, I mean, there's an example, it's not a lot, but it's one, and it can. The, how do we stand now with, for example, the Graylock Works? I know some of you say there are percentages, commercial space versus residential space? Like, how far are they? Do we know? Is Graylock Works, are we done with the tips on that, or is that still going?
This is their last year.
This is their last year? So, we'll be getting 100%, which I don't think included the condos anyway. I think that was just the commercial, yeah. But hopefully they're doing well.
Can you answer your question?
Yeah.
In terms of the new construction data?
Yeah.
I'm just going to read this from my handbook. Assessors must collect data on properties that have had new construction, alterations, or demolitions each year, and update the property inventory records to reflect the physical status of each parcel as of June 30th, reflecting the assessed assessment on January 1st. And then assessors must determine the percentage of completion of any new construction on the status date. That percentage is applied to the estimated value of the structure as completed. That amount is then added to the land value to determine the property's valuation for that year.
Well, the exciting thing is, it shows there's still a lot more percentage to go.
Yeah, there's still work to be done there for sure.
So, to get into your, the specifics of your question, we had four condos that last year were at 50%. Now they're being taxed at 100%. And then we had some that...
Eight, eight, eight that are going through.
Right, and then we also have the 25% that were taxed last year that are now at 25%.
And does it make a difference if the condos are, haven't sold yet, or is it when they sell? How, does that make any difference?
It's sort of the, it's value, whatever the market value is.
So, if it's listed but hasn't sold yet, it's still...
It's still at whatever market value is, and then if it, when it sells, that brings up the number.
So, I mean, I think we remember one was listed at $1 million. So, it's being taxed at $1 million?
What the market value is.
Whatever the market value is. How are we currently, and again, I don't, is, is the taxes gone up or different? So, you take, for example, the former St. Francis lot, even though there's no building there, but they've developed the land. Is that being taxed higher as is, or is it still considered just an empty lot?
Land just has one tax rate, it just goes by, if they built something on the parcel, then whatever's built on the parcel, if it's a taxable parcel, should be added to the assessment value, which should be taxed.
But like, for example, I mean, they probably put $2 million into like developing the land that's there. Does that any change it?
Keep in mind that that was exempt for many years, and then when Cole Best bought it, it became taxable. So even now that it's just land, we are getting revenue from that. Whereas before, when it was a church.
No, and I get that, I just didn't know, though, like you say, with how it's been developed to this point, because I mean, that wall seems like that would have value.
The wall is very expensive, but it's mostly on the land.
Okay. On the last of the types of properties, am I not seeing the nonprofits or the non-taxable properties?
I don't have those listed, but I do have the number of exempt properties. The general 900 class, 900 just means tax exempt, has 363 parcels with a total assessed value of $306,52768.
And that, does that include some of our own?
Yes.
So, that includes our own, the schools, hospital, church, college, and all that stuff. That's it, thank you.
Let's see, Counselor Fitch.
I just have a clarification question.
Okay, go ahead, Counsel Blackman.
Because Counsel Bonner was talking about the shift, and the CIP is still 1.715 in '25 and '26, but the residential factor changes from .8138 to .8202 because the percentage of residential property we have?
Yes.
Okay, because in my head, first look, you'd think it should be the same number, but it has to do with the percentage of property that's residential. Okay, thank you, I just wanted to clarify that we didn't change the CIP. No, thanks.
Counselor Fitch.
Thank you, yeah, I also wanted to comment on the split between our residential and commercial tax rate. Keith Bonner, Counsel Bonner, excuse me, commented on this earlier, but just another thing, I looked up ahead of time the Massachusetts Department of Revenue stats and, you know, went through the chart and ranked us basically. So, we're the fourth highest in the state in terms of commercial property tax rate, after Holyoke, Pittsfield, and Springfield. And we are the 20th highest in the state in terms of residential, behind Leansboro, actually. And I looked up the first, the highest in terms of residential is Chilmark, which is a town essentially on Martha's Vineyard, and the average home value there is something like $4 million. So, I understand, you know, they, they have more money to draw from, since the property tax rate is lower, we have less to draw from, so ours is a bit higher, and so that is understandable. But what is concerning to me is the high commercial tax rate here. I don't see it necessarily holding us back, it just doesn't really feel like a good look if we want to be a business-friendly community, if we do want to expand our commercial sector, which I know a lot of our residents really do, because people talk a lot about wanting more jobs here, more commercial entities here to employ more people. I think we should really look at that in the future. And I'm not suggesting a rate switch right now, but I do think that we should look at that in the long run and try to figure something out.
Hey, Counsel Shane.
Thank you. Going off of Counsel Bonner's questions, under types of properties, one thing I don't see listed, how many short-term rentals do we have in the city?
We have 21 registered short-term rentals with the city. Those 21, I mean, they have taken it upon themselves to follow the correct procedures that the city has put in place to register.
Okay, and are all 21 of one of them being assessed for personal property tax?
I believe all 21 are being charged for personal property tax.
And do we have a system or way of looking into, because clearly 21 is a lot. There's far more properties being used as short-term rentals than 21 that are registered. So, are we assessing other properties that might be using them that haven't registered? Are we assessing them for personal property?
Not right at this moment, but it is something that I'm working on.
Okay. Thank you.
See, Counselor Brain, you haven't spoken yet.
Yeah, I have a question that was just brought up. Under the 900, you have 363 units exempt ones, which include our properties, our schools, the 360 million. If we took the dollar value of the City of Northham's out of the, what would be the amount?
I do not have the number in front of me, I've just, Northham's only did. Like the churches, the schools, and everything like that. I only have the total.
You only have the total?
Yeah, so I can follow up with you and give you that number?
Yeah, what I'm looking for is the tax value. If, if these properties were taxed, what is that, that number? At the 360, you're including everything, what, what's the factor there?
360 times the tax, the value times what have been taxing.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I have to...
You can use my phone. The reason I'm asking is, I looked at 14 other communities, and they have a program called Pilot, Paying Low Taxes. And I'm just trying to see what the basis is. They get like 25% up to 50% from other places, down in Northampton, they make it on everywhere. I'm just trying to see what's the dollar value? What is that difference?
Yeah, I can get it tomorrow, just the exempt, not including the City of Northham's buildings. But because I only have the total, I'm not able to separate those.
Okay, so, so with the total, how much, how many dollars are we talking about?
So, if you take the 306 million, 502, and 768?
Well, just the 360, okay, that's simple.
Divided by 1,000 times the 1597?
And then the residential, yeah?
No, residential, or that's the residential, sorry, 3340.
So, I have 12.025, 12 million dollars? Million dollars a month?
Counselor Brain, can I get you to speak up just a little bit?
Yeah, I'm just trying to get the value of the number. If we do 360 million and we do it, the formula, that $33 comes up to 12 million dollars. But I don't know how much the city has of that property.
Point of order, point of order.
How is it relevant to what we're discussing tonight?
It's taxable possibilities.
Not, not in your, my lifetime.
I hope we live long enough. Is that a number you could get to me? Okay, that's it.
Okay, Counselor Fitch, you had your hand up first.
Yeah, thank you, and responding to something that Counsel Shane brought up, that we have 25 registered short-term rentals?
Sorry?
25 registered short-term rentals? 21, got it, yeah. So, AirDNA, which is a website, which seems to scrape all of the data from Airbnb, VRBO, and other entities as well, we have 125 available listings right now in Northham, so there is quite a discrepancy. That doesn't mean that they're all full-time whole-house rentals. It has a breakdown here of 93% entire homes, 6% private room, 1% shared room, so on and so forth. But that is a source of data, and I believe that that's reliable for us to be able to look at.
Okay, Counsel Blackman.
To clarify that, a lot of the, not all, but many, a high percentage of Airbnbs are also owned by someone who doesn't live in the community, so it's already being taxed with the property tax, personal property tax as a second homeowner. So, I think we're not missing as much as it originally sounds like we might be missing. But it, obviously, I mean, I, my family comes to visit and they stay in Airbnbs, so I know there's a lot of options out there, and I think it's something we, at some point in another discussion, we need to do something about. But also want to clarify with the pilot agreements. I have studied this and looked at this also. And one, one of the bigger, bigger ones is going to be the college. Well, the state's not going to pay us anything, other than what they already pay us to, and very inappropriate formula that the state already sets. Second one is going to be the hospital. I don't know about you, but I don't really want to risk losing my hospital over getting submitted taxes. And I do think that a bulk of our nonprofit or tax exempt is going to be a lot of, it's going to be city-owned properties. So, it would be interesting to have that. Also, what other communities have done is when they do it, it's usually, Northampton did it years ago. One, they don't have to pay it, so they, the state refuses to make that law. It usually sets a minimum, like anything over $1 million. So, the YMCA in Northampton was valued over that, so they were expected to pay. They didn't usually do a pilot, they did a silent services and lieu taxes as opposed to payment and lieu taxes. And while I think it's a worthwhile endeavor, I don't think it is a topic of this discussion.
Thank you, Counsel Shane.
Yes. One thing that's been talked about tonight is the difference between the commercial and residential rates, which I think is very important. The one thing that hasn't been mentioned tonight that we know the public is going to mention many, many times, how does the new school factor into this?
It does not factor into this.
Okay, and when do we expect that the new school will start to factor into our tax bills?
Next year.
So, not fiscal year '26, fiscal year '27?
'27, yeah.
We have not, or anything on the school project that would affect rate in this cycle.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Bonner?
Yeah, could you, you know, off of, you know, rates versus, you know, the actual bill? So, Counselor Fitch, you mentioned where we fall with the commercial rate. And we did, out of 360-plus communities, we are the fourth from the top for commercial rate. And I think you said we were like 25th or 26th for residential, which still seems high on 361. However, flip that to the average bill, and out of 361 communities, we are usually 10 to 15 from the bottom of the average tax bill. So, there's 350 communities that their tax bills are actually getting more than us. And a lot of those are not communities with paid fire departments, with three or four schools, with water and sewer, and with the amount of highways that we have. A lot of small communities, most of their highways are actually covered by the state, you know, and their bridges and things like that. So, the expenses and the amenities that we offer are more than most of these communities that actually give a lot less. The exciting thing with new development is there is a lot of potential out there that we hopefully will see within the next few years. You know, if you look just downtown and you think of the Dowling Building, 85 Main Street, the Tower Building, Notre Dame Church, I mean, if and when those get developed, there could be 100-plus residential, plus some commercial spaces, Sullivan School, hopefully, you know, within the next few years, will be open in new taxable residentials. Another one I have a question about, and again, if it's just taxes land, is, so National Grid, I believe purchased the former, you know, we know as the Price Chopper lot on Current Highway, even though Price Chopper, the buildings have been gone for a long time. So, it was an empty lot, it was purchased 20 years ago by a developer, and it's been sitting there, and I believe Price, Notre, National Grid recently purchased it. And while there isn't any building on it, they clearly are using it for industrial purposes. Is that a case again, or just taxing them for land? Or do, does, do we get anything more than that?
It would depend on how they're occupying the space totally. So, if they're just using it for storage... So if they're just using it for storage, which is what I've seen so far, they're already taxed for the personal property that's being stored there, so they just get the land tax value.
So sort of on their inventory that's there is what they're being taxed on?
The inventory that's there is taxed at the commercial rate, and then the land that it sits on, unless they have something else there that would deem it commercial, would be residential.
I mean, I imagine, at least what I see laying on the ground, there must have a pretty decent value, but I don't know how we tax that, you know, how, how do you tax some of that stuff?
Personal property, personal property.
Right. What's that?
Personal property.
Right, right. I'm sure there's got to be a million dollars worth of personal property laying on the ground out there, you know, but, all right, well, at least we're making it personal property versus commercial building value. That's it, thank you.
Okay. Any other councilors? Okay, I'm going to open this up, oh, sorry, Councilor Fitch?
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to open this up to members of the public. If you'd like to speak, please raise your hand, I'll call you up to the microphone. Name an address for the record. Please step up to the mic, name an address for the record.
Jesus Leva, 287 Coven Street?
Can we speak up a little, can, thank you.
Jesus Leva, 287 Coven Street?
Perfect.
I just wanted to follow up on Counselor Blackmore's comment concerning a payment and lieu taxes program, and specifically Northampton. I did actually used to live in Northampton, and a number of residents brought that idea up to then Mayor David Erkelwitz. We supported the idea that we tried to adopt something similar to what Boston had done, which Boston has one of the largest, successful payment and lieu taxes programs, although it has been less successful recently. The program never took off in, I think, the, the letter was sent out to most of the large taxable entities, or tax-exempt entities, Smith College being the largest majority share of it, and they simply declined the comment. So it's just not really an option.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any other councilors, any other questions? Okay, at this time, the public hearing is now closed, and hearing, no further questions, comments, I'm closing the public hearing portion of the meeting. Meeting minutes, approve the meeting minutes. Motion to approve the September 23rd, 2025 City Council meeting minutes. This was postponed from the last meeting.
What are the verifications? We only have the October 14th?
I handed out the other one at the last meeting, and everybody took them with them because we postponed it, so that people could read it. I did not reprint.
Not to per. Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the October 14th, 2025 City Council meeting minutes.
Not to per.
Second?
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
I want to abstain.
Council Wilkinson abstains, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Oppose? Motion passes. One extension. Hearing and visitors on the agenda. This is an opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes regarding items listed on the agenda. As a reminder, I will tap the gavel when you've reached the two-minute limit to signal that your time has ended. And as a courtesy, I also ask that all parties please refrain from any personal attacks. Anybody for hearing the visitors? Okay, seeing none? Council Paper Number 12,522, A Communication From President Sapienza Regarding The Vacant City Council Seat Due To Resignation Of Counselor Morrow, Postponed For The Meeting Of 9/23/25 To Be Filled After The Municipal Election At The Meeting Of November 12, 2025. We have two emails from two people that are interested, and, let's see. Would we like to make a motion to continue, or would you want to hear the letters to begin?
I want to hear from them, that was a whole question. We were going to vote on somebody today, and the clerk signed them in, and we're ready to rock.
Okay, let's go.
Sorry.
Okay. Would, let's see. Would Mr. Vayers, please step up to the mic and read your letter to us?
Good evening, everyone, Josh Vayers, 211 Protection Act. So, you know, before it was determined by the council on how to fill the seat beyond the ordinance that was requiring, you know, there is the unsure question of whether, you know, council rules, you know, where we solicit letters from the public to be followed. The rules were followed, and the letters were requested of the candidate. So when I initially submitted my letter, I was unsure how many people were going to throw their hat in, the hat in for this here. Ever the precautionist, I hope to submit my name and the chance that my experienced clerking for the city council would come to good use. But as we see here tonight, we have another name who ran one hell of a campaign for city council, knocked on doors and earned the votes of 1,585 constituents. Beyond the likely two write-in votes for Josh Vayers, that were confirmed to me by friends of mine, I can't say the same. And so in spite of this, I would be remiss to pass on the opportunity to speak to the council on issues of municipal significance, but I urge you to vote for the soon-to-be counselor who put in the hard work and earned your vote tonight. You know, in our next city councilor, we need a voice for transparency, for outreach. North Adams needs the antennae of our government to feel out the needs of our public. Our constituency deserves a voice. A true representation of that can be made clear if we have an active and engaged group of individuals to relay the wants, the needs, the stories of our community right here and beyond these walls. There are a lot of challenges underway that need to be addressed. We have significant infrastructure needs. We have a greater demand of the resources available to us. We have a population that's trying to stay afloat in an ongoing cost of living crisis. Seeing the way that our community supports each other in these trying times is uplifting. But these are issues that I want to see, I hope to see, related to the council body regularly in our new candidate. Affordable housing and quality public schooling is a must to both our current constituency and to the transplants that we need to incentivize to come here. We want North Adams as a final destination for families to want to live here in the long term, and we need our budget to reflect that. Additionally, but not finally, we need to ensure that our development of infrastructure benefits underserved populations, giving them a seat at the table where traditionally there hasn't been. Now, I didn't submit my application with the expectation that I would fix all of these things. A strong mayor government, that's the chief executive's job. I submitted my application, though, with the belief and due diligence, creating what the mayor's office brings forward and acting as a good faith liaison to the administration on behalf of the public. We need in our next city councilor a person of clear integrity in the backbone to stand up for what's right and to give them the voice that, to the voice those that feel underrepresented in our city government. I believe that candidate is Marie McCarren, and while I dream someday of serving on this body, I feel as though she has done the substantive work to take on the seat. My desire to serve should not come before the drive, the voracious determination of Marie, who was committed her campaign to the responsibility that this position entails. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would Ms. McCarren? Would Ms. McCarren please step up to the microphone?
It's a hard one to follow.
I've got nothing to say. Marie McCarren?
You can take it off if that's easier.
I can't beat that, I'm sorry. Marie McCarren, 106 Pleasant Street? I wrote a simple letter to formally express my interest in filling the current vacancy under North Adams City Council. I'm grateful for the strong support shown by our community and eager to continue contributing to the city's progress through this additional opportunity to serve. I've been a resident here in North Adams for the past 32 years, and I have been deeply involved in our community through both my professional and volunteer work. I have taught in North Adams for more than 23 years and continue to serve under North Adams' permission. Over the years, I've had the privilege of working with residents, families, and organizations in various capacities, all with a shared commitment to strengthening our city. I am ready to contribute from day one, bringing a collaborative approach and continued focus on transparency, youth engagement, and strengthening our community connections. Just a couple more things. Sorry. As Josh said, there's a lot of things, priorities, and some of mine are affordable housing, infrastructure, supporting our economic growth, that benefits everyone. I think North Adams is at an important turning point, and I want to make sure that we're planning for the future in a way that's sustainable and inclusive. And I'd be honored to step in and begin working, begin the work of listening, learning, and collaborating right away. My goal would be to ensure a smooth transition, start building relationships with our councilors and community partners. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I move to point Marie McCarren to the open seat on the North Adams City Council. It's for the end of the year.
Second. All right, we have two seconds. Okay, any discussion? Councilor Shade?
Yes, first, I want to say thank you to both Josh and Marie for stepping up, being willing to put in your name and being willing to speak to us. It takes courage to come up here and submit a letter of interest, knowing that you probably won't get selected, but to do so anyway and make your voice heard is something special and admirable. So thank you for doing that. And I want to thank the rest of the council members for allowing us to go through the process of hearing anyone that wanted to be interested in filling the position. I think it's so important, whether we select somebody who got votes or select a member of the community, to hear from as many voices as possible. And I wish we had gotten more letters, because I know there's more ideas and more thoughts from community members that I would have loved to have the opportunity to speak tonight and tell us. But I'm grateful that we got you wonderful people, and I'm excited to get Marie up here on the council. Thank you.
Okay. Councilor Bona?
Yeah. I'll be honored to approve having Marie McCarren come in and fill the empty seat next to us here. I've known Marie for a couple decades, hardly was that long, but, you know, she was my daughter's favorite elementary school teacher, so obviously we were close in that matter. And I saw her fight for her students and make sure her class and the students got what they needed. And I wrote a post a few weeks ago and said, you know, knowing that if she fights for the residents as much as she fights for her students, they will be in good hands. So I'll be happy to approve, again, having her come in. Thank you.
Councilor Fitch?
Yeah, certainly, Josh Vayers, you're a classy person. And thank you so much for your contributions, as always. I've known Josh Vayers for a couple of years, I've known Marie McCarren for a couple of months, but I love and welcome Marie McCarren for this opportunity, and I thank you so much for stepping forward and taking this leap of courage to fill the seat early.
Thank you. And I'd like to say a couple of words. I've known the McCarrens for several years, as I live right across the street from them. And I would be proud to support her as a possible candidate for the empty seat tonight, if we do decide to go that way. Any other comments? We have a motion and a second. This will be a roll call vote.
Blackmore?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Breen?
Yes.
Fitch?
Yes.
Alaska?
Yes.
Shade?
Absolutely, yes.
Wilkinson?
Sure, why not?
Sapienza?
Yes.
Congratulations, we now have a new counselor, Councilor McCarren. At this time, we're going to swear in Counselor McCarren.
I am, when you. Please raise your right hand. And keep after me. Aye?
Aye.
State your name.
Marie V. McCarren.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Into the best of my ability.
Into the best of my ability.
And knowledge.
And knowledge.
As a city councilor.
As a city councilor.
For the city of North Adams.
For the city of North Adams.
Uphold.
Uphold.
The regulations.
The regulations.
Of the Commonwealth.
The Commonwealth.
The ordinances.
The ordinances.
Of the city of North Adams.
Of the city of North Adams.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Yeah, we should get the paperwork from the charge. I got a whole folder of keynotes.
Don't forget to delete until you know it right.
Always do. Comes out in a paycheck.
Again, congratulations and welcome aboard to the North Adams City Council.
Thank you.
Council Paper Number 12,525, Communication Number 129 For Mayor Jennifer Maxi Requesting Time For Chief Bailey To Give A Brief Presentation Regarding A Proposed Prohibition Of Single-Use Nip Bottle Sales Within The City, Referred To The Public Safety Committee On September 23rd, 2025 With A Return Date Of November 12, 2025.
Let's file the communication. Second?
Round second. Okay. I do have some notes from the Public Safety Committee. We met on October 8th to discuss this paper. Just prior to our meeting, Counselor Bona, acting in cooperation with a group of people, store owners and individuals, established a program of BFAIR to accept and collect these nip bottles, offering a five-cent bottle per bottle refund to anyone turning in these bottles at their redemption center. Counselor Bona informed us that the program is being funded by private donations and is not affiliated in any way with the city of North Adams. The Public Safety Committee made a motion to recommend to the full council to postpone any action on a potential nip bottle ban until the second council meeting in the month of February. During the discussion, this later date was chosen to give the program described by Counselor Bona a chance to be evaluated on its effectiveness. A motion was passed two to one in favor with Counselor Breenes and Sapienza voting affirmative and Counselor Wilkinson opposing. Therefore, it's my recommendation to make a motion to postpone this until the second meeting in February. This will allow time to evaluate the effectiveness of the collection program before we take any action to codify a ban on single-use nip bottles. I will make a motion.
I made a motion to file it.
Okay.
Unless you want to bring it back with an update? I mean...
I would prefer to bring it back on the second meeting in February with an update.
Okay, move to, I'm sorry, I rescind my motion and change my motion to, move to continue till the...
The second meeting in February.
Second meeting in February.
Yep.
With an update from public safety and from whomever's involved in the project.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Startin'.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? Counselor Bona?
Yeah, I can give you an update. The first full week, BFAIR has taken in over 5,000 nip bottles, and I was over there
well. But I'm just really excited to see the community come together and find a solution to a problem without just waiting for government to step in. So, thank you, my thoughts. Kudos to you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Okay, we have a motion to postpone to the second meeting in February. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Propose? Motion passes. Council Paper Number 12,532, a communication from Counselor Fitch requesting a public data dashboard from city administration to track the impact of federal administration and congressional cuts on North Adams, referred to administration at the meeting of October 14th, 2025, with a return date of November 12th, 2025. Counselor Fitch, do you have an update for us?
Yes, certainly. I did speak with the mayor, actually, very quickly. I want to applaud the mayor for her swift action on this, and actually, the IT department, I should say, as well, by the way. They did stick a link to the impact of the federal administration and congressional cuts on Massachusetts on our city website, so that people can go and see that. It is just a link to a website, because we, and Mayor Maxi, go for a chime, and if I got this wrong, we're not aware of any actual drawbacks that have impacted directly in North Adams yet, so there's no need for a dashboard yet. I would just like to reiterate my request, if there are any cuts in the future, are any drawbacks in the future, loss of funding, that is reported to us as a community on the website and also in the council meeting. But thank you very much to the administration for getting this done.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion?
Move to file a communication.
Second.
Motion to file, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Propose? Motion passes. Council Paper Number 12,537-1, in order to set the tax classification of local tax levy to be allocated to each class of real estate and personal property for fiscal year 2026. Do we have a motion?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, this is a roll call vote.
Blackburn? Yes. Bona?
Yes.
Breen?
Yes.
Fitch?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Alaskawes?
Yes.
Shay?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Nine W's.
Motion passes.
Council President, May.
Yes, go ahead, Mayor.
We'd just like to thank the assessing team for being here tonight. Great job to our new assessor and her mentor, Jessica Lincourt. Sierra, you did a great job, and we look forward to working with you in the future. And thank you all to the council for your support.
Thank you.
Now, we can print textbooks. That's what I'm saying.
Okay, moving on. Council Paper Number 12,540, Communication Number 138 for Mayor Maxi, presenting a proclamation in support of International Transgender Day of Remembrance. Follow the communication without objection and turn it over to Mayor Maxi.
Thank you, President Sapienza. I would like to proclaim November 20th as Transgender Day of Remembrance, whereas the city of North Adams honors the inherent dignity and value of all individuals embracing diversity and inclusion as essential to our community's strength and character. And whereas International Transgender Day of Remembrance is held annually on November 20th, memorializes those whose lives have been lost to anti-transgender voice and discrimination and raises awareness of the continued struggles faced by transgender and gender diverse people. And whereas the city of North Adams stands committed to fostering and welcoming a safe community for all, supporting efforts that promote understanding, visibility, and justice for transgender and gender diverse individuals. And whereas it is vital that we remember those who have lost their lives to hate and intolerance, honor their memories through action, and reaffirm our collective responsibility to stand against all forms of discrimination and violence. Now, therefore, I, Jennifer A. Maxi, Mayor of the city of North Adams, do proclaim November 20th as International Transgender Day of Remembrance in the city of North Adams. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Shay?
Thank you. Council Paper Number 12,541, a communication from Counselor Fitch requesting time to discuss opportunities to improve communications to better meet the needs of the community. I'm going to file a communication. Counselor Fitch, would you like to take?
Yes, certainly. And thank you for this opportunity. So, we all just went through an election cycle in the city of North Adams. A lot of messages were out there, a lot of hopes and dreams were put out there, a lot of direct actions were put out there, you know, steps that people are going to take. I think this is a fresh opportunity for us to sit as a community and to have listens to all of those voices and collective information, and then to decide to do something about that moving forward. What can we do better as a new council here, as a new administration here? So, a lot of what I heard about was communication and transparency throughout this election cycle. You know, we heard a lot of things, but I heard a lot about that. And I just wanted to take a moment to go through a couple suggestions and ask a couple questions of the council and the administration. So, regarding transparency, I'm just going to read the definition that comes up first when you Google transparency. Transparency is the principle of being open and clear in actions, decisions, and communications, allowing others to see what is happening. Continuing to the next sentence, too, it refers to the quality of being seen through, both literally like a window and figuratively, such as a government or business acting without hidden agendas. Now, I wanted to comment on that last part especially. I don't perceive that there are hidden agendas within our city. However, there is certainly perception of that at times because of perhaps less than standard or less than ideal communications. And so, I wanted to talk about communicating a little bit better as a form of performing better transparency. Another just quick note, too, and I brought this up on council floor before, last January, I believe it was, Counselor Blackburn and I attended the Massachusetts Municipal Association NAC351 Conference, a collection of all the elected officials across the state. I attended a specific workshop that was titled "Build Trust in Local Government Through Communications." Let's see where I'm getting here. I wrote down a quote, and I refer to this all the time, that I learned in that workshop. Distant government tends to mean distrusted government. So, if we are to build better trust from our community and within our community, and pull people more into our city government and get more participation, I think stronger communications would be a good solution, a good next step forward towards that. So, that's kind of why I wanted to bring this up. Some suggestions slash questions and open conversation, if anyone is willing to participate in this right now, starting with council. So, a couple just thoughts about maybe ways we could do better in our next term, explaining each of our old agenda items just a little more clearly. Perhaps there's even a mechanism that asks the sponsor of a particular communication or ordinance to re-explain what they went through, we know why they brought it up, and the stages that it has gone through. I think we could also perhaps reiterate at the very beginning of the meeting before open forum, and at the end of the meeting before the second open forum, of just that we want to hear from people, we want to hear their opinions, and this is a time for you to speak. I know that there is already a structure of doing that, but I think it could just be done a little more openly. And another thing, too, I think it could be a mechanism of ours as a council to put out some sort of a newsletter of what's happened in the last month, what's coming up in the next month, maybe a calendar of events or something as well. That is something that I think we could do as a council without counting on the administration we're asking of the administration. And now, to the administration, and I've also brought these up before, but I do think it would be nice to have program and project updates on our website, even regular program and project updates, like what's the status of this construction project, what's the status of this school project, what's the status or the schedule of our street sweeping or our pothole filling on roads? Because people ask these questions a lot, and oftentimes, they come to individuals on council or directly to the mayor, and it would be really nice to get it out there fully and be able to share links with people and say, this is the central source of information. You can count on this central source of information. Also, perhaps, and the mayor's already started to do this, which is great, but a rotation of department presentations within council. Last meeting, I believe it was, we had our water department speak, you know, tell us all about how our water works in North Adams. It was great, and hopefully helped to build trust in our local government. So, that was a great step that is already being taken. Having perhaps an annual state of the city, I don't know if that would be an event or a publication of some kind, but I think that would really help get everyone on board with the city of North Adams at the beginning of every year or early in every year. And also, I'll bring this up again in the budget season, this June, as I did last June, I think we could perhaps benefit from having a communications lead in our city. It doesn't mean that it needs to be a whole new role, but having budgeted at least a chunk of person's time to really focus on this, to do this well, and to hold us all accountable for doing a little bit better there, I think would be really helpful. The question for everyone else is, what do you all think about this? Do you have any thoughts or ideas? Should any next steps be taken right now, or should we wait till the next term?
I'm willing to allow anybody that has any suggestions or anything to speak at this point. Anybody has? Counselor Blackburn?
I think I've seen it on a lot of town, city websites, because I look at them a lot. There's always a section of news, and some of it's press releases that have gone out, or even if you look at the state website or the whole MMA's website, you see that. If at some point we could work a section in. So, I know that the mayor will give us updates on this road and that road, but that might be like three weeks after it happened, depending on how our meetings fall and what else is a priority. But if there could be a section that could be easily created, that somebody could be loading up, that the Brown Street Bridge is open, you know, or we've started work on Walnut, you know, these are the things that everybody's asking me about, so those are the things that come to mind, but.
Little south fireworks from the Brown Street Bridge.
And Walnut Street Center. But I know that, you know, we talk about them, people come to us, but it would be kind of nice to say, if I want to know, to just click on it and say, okay, this is where we're at, it went out to bid, we took bids in, we awarded the bid, they're supposed to start in two weeks, we're hoping they're going to be done before the snow flies. Fortunately, the snow flew a lot earlier than we planned out this year. But I think that section of our website, if we could add that without a lot of cost or hassle, would be really helpful for all of us as far as that communication. I also think that there's a bunch of webinars, MMA webinars, a lot of times they do them like every week almost, done by one of the different associations. And there's actually a communication subgroup now of the MNI, and they've been doing them. But they record them, and they usually have slides, so if you go to their website, you can see some of the things that other communities have done. I think that would be helpful, and obviously, I'm going to put in a plug for Connect 351, because we have 351 cities and towns. And that is from the 22nd to the 24th of January, and hopefully, there'll be more information on that. But I think it's good, I think it's, I'm not sure who's got the wherewithal and the technology skills to create a newsletter. If we all, if somebody was in charge of it, and we are all sending in one piece or getting an update on what the committee worked, that might be good, but it's not my skill set. Want to talk to me? Talk to me about municipal finance. That's my skill set.
Counselor Bona?
Oh, a city clerk could do a newsletter. She's got plenty of time. There's some things here I agree with, some things I think should be discussed. I think if anything, and I'm going to throw this out there, but maybe this could be referred, so it's not just taking up a piece of a whole meeting tonight, but could be referred to general government, and then the public can also participate more into this, if people want to participate in that, and maybe break these down, and a little bit more, you know, just, again, instead of trying to cram it into tonight, to me, they could be maybe more specific. I'm just focusing on that. And again, have it go out ahead of time, like resend that out to councilors, say, look, we're having a general government, here's my points again, what's your thoughts? And those who want to contribute can go to the meeting or at least send something in. That would be a suggestion, maybe start it right at the new year, when we got new counselors that are on board. The idea with news, I would say this, Counselor Cridy, you know, she used to have a series sort of right before her council meeting, and she would go over the agenda, and it was on, it was broadcasted on the same station. Today, it probably would be streamed. And she would go over the agenda and talk about, like, this is what this is about, this is what we're going to be discussing, this is what you might hear from counselors, and why you might hear it. I felt she did it in a pretty unbiased way, without giving an opinion during that, but just saying, this is what it's about, and this is what you're going to hear the council debate over. That could be sort of something like that in a social media kind of format. The issue with that is, let's just say you do a newsletter, you do something like that, and you say, oh, I'll do it, but, you know, two years later, you might not be here, and does it just drop? You know, does it become something formal? Is it just a pet project that a certain counselor or some counselors have, and then they move on, it just dies? That I don't know. But it's worth the discussion, it's worth considering. Again, my suggestion might be having this go further into discussion to, you know, general government, I think is the best place, that's where we talk about when we're changing council rules. So, it seems like some of this almost falls within putting things in our council rules. Thank you.
Counselor Shay?
Yes, first, thank you, Counselor Fitch, for bringing this forward. I just think there's so many ways that we can do better in communicating with our constituents, so many ways we can be more transparent. We invested in our budget money to upgrade the facilities in this room, and we are still working on that. But when that happens, I'd love for us to have all of our meetings available hybrid. I think that is a huge piece to accessibility and transparency. I think that we can do a better job of communicating our own city programs, but also, like, simple things like if you wanted a business application, having the license and all the paperwork online available, ready in one spot, so you can see everything you need to do, check it. I've talked to the mayor about this in the past. We were waiting for our online technology to improve. I know those new systems are in place. I'd love to see us take advantage of our new systems and the new technologies that come along with them. Now, it's about getting the right people that can do that, but we have the technology, and now's the time to invest the time, the effort, the manpower into using those new resources that we have to making everything easier for the residents to access. So, we definitely have made the investments, now it's all about time and manpower essentially, and I hope we can see those changes over the next few. Thank you.
Counselor Breen?
From Andrew's communications, I was thinking about, we recently had a lot of grants, and one that just piqued my interest was storefronts. You know, storefronts downtown, I'm coming from a family that filled a lot of storefronts in the city of North Adams. I looked around the state, and another community had the basics for the same exact grant we had, you know, and it talks about how to apply, the funding details, the deadlines, which are really tight on this one. I don't know if it's across the state or just this particular place, but I think that's part of the problem, the communication is, people go, I didn't know that, I'd really like to do that. I think if we could get those pieces out, it will take away the fog, if you will, and the complaining, because these are great things that are coming our way, and people are busy. But I think if we have some mechanism on our site that just, you can click on it and just read a little bit about it, I think that would be a great thing to do.
Thank you. Mayor, I know you've been wanting to say something.
Yes, so a couple.
Now it's about getting the right people that can do that, but we have the technology, and now's the time to invest the time, the effort, the manpower into using those new resources that we have, to making everything easier for the residents to access. So we definitely have made the investments, now it's all about time and manpower essentially, and I hope we can see those changes over the next few. Thank you.
Council Bree?
From Andrew's Communications, I was thinking about, we recently had a lot of grants, and one that just piqued my interest was storefronts. You know, storefronts downtown, I'm coming from a family that filled a lot of storefronts in the city of North Adams. I looked around the state, and another community had the basics for the same exact grant we had, you know, and it talks about how to apply, the funding details, the deadlines, which are really tight on this one, I don't know if it's across the state or just this particular place, but I think that's part of the problem, the communication is, people go, I didn't know that, I'd really like to do that. I think if we could get those pieces out, it will take away the fog, if you will, and the complaining, because these are great things that are coming our way, and people are busy, but I think if we have some mechanism on our site that just, you can click on it and just read a little bit about it, I think that would be a great thing to do.
Thank you. Mayor, I know you've been wanting to say something.
Yeah, so a couple of things, you know, every campaign cycle, you learn a little bit, something new, and every day, no matter what our jobs are, you should be learning something new. So the buzzword is transparency, and as I've said, and I readily have admitted, that often I hold things close to my vest until I'm ready to execute. So we, as an administration, have been talking for the last few weeks about how we can tell our story about the good work we're doing, because the team is doing good work. And I agree with Council Fitch about being out there more. So I would publicly say that I intend to be on the radio a little bit more. Tommy and I are going to be doing a podcast, maybe not the exact name of Minutes with the Mayor. We will continue to bring department heads into the city council meeting. We're going to use the TV station a little bit more to do some messaging. Definitely, our website can be more robust, but all of that kind of takes time. And if you look back over the last four years, we've been shifting people around, we've had a lot of retirements, we have some people who aren't up with technology as they should be, we're migrating into a new computer system, so we're doing a lot of background work that needs to be told more, and we will get better at that. But I'm really, you know, interested in working with the council to tell those stories. I know often people say, you know, I'll say, well, I've told, I said that at city council, but not everybody tunes in. I think having us on YouTube has helped us increase our messaging, because not everybody can watch us in real time. So those are things that we're aware of, those are things that we have on our radio, on our radar, so we will be rolling out some different things that you haven't seen before, and we have to measure the effectiveness. As you said, we don't have a communications director, we all play a role in that, but we do recognize we need to be better at it, but I think it's going to be a team effort. And I also say with, to some of you, what would be helpful to us is when we postpone things to committee, if we're timely getting those meetings scheduled, so it doesn't look like it takes us six months to get work done. I know sometimes it needs to be six months, but often, if we could be more timely when we're setting those meetings, not only does it help us as the administration, it helps the people who are very interested in those topics, because that's what we get all the time, what was on the council agenda, where is it? So once it hits your domain, it's in your court, and that's what I'm looking for, I'm looking for responsiveness from my legislative branch, who have been wonderful, please don't misunderstand that statement, but I think we all have a role in communicating better. Thank you.
Thank you. A couple last words, I just want to remind the public that all of the councilors are accessible, we have email addresses, which you can email us at any time. Many of us have phone numbers published on the city website, under city council, so that you may be able to call us. If we can't talk to you right at the moment, we will reschedule a call and call you back at a more convenient time. We have media partners, two of which are in the room, are I Bercher's partner and our Berkshire Eagle partner. I encourage more use of the local TV station, we have that great resource, and we also have a low-power FM station, which may also be used as an avenue to get more of the word out to people. For instance, the mayor talked about maybe a moment with the mayor, or mayor's updates, or something that could be done on that radio station, as well as the commercial station, WNAW and WUPE, which both serve this area. And so, but, most importantly, all our meetings are open, everybody, all the public is welcome to attend, I like to see a room full of smiling faces, and to both our main council meetings, our committee meetings, and any boards or commissions, please, if you can, attend, and if not, if you have questions, please ask us. Council Shay?
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you for that reminder. For any constituents who want to meet with me personally, you can go to my website, my scheduling software is right on there, where you can schedule a meeting with me in real time, whether it be in-person Zoom, a phone call, and you can get right in my calendar to see my availability. Perhaps we should look into something like that for all of us on the city level, so we can make it easier, integrate our calendars, and make it easier for people to schedule meetings with us. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Anybody else?
I was going to make a motion, because we don't have one.
Okay, go ahead.
Move to refer to general government, with a return date of February 10th, by that point, we will know who the committee is, and they will have time to hopefully attend the MMA, Connect 351, AKA the annual meeting, and come back with great stuff, and come up with some ideas and plans to put in place.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. And that meeting was January 10th?
February 10th would be the meeting I've.
February 10th, okay.
Continued to, and I'll talk about the MMA again later.
Okay, we have a motion to refer this to general government with a return date of February 10th. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
I. Opposed? Motion passes. Committee reports in minutes. We have no licenses, I'm going to move on to open forum. Open forum, this is an opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes on issues of municipal significance. As a reminder, I will tap the gavel when you have reached the two-minute limit to signal that your time has ended, and as a courtesy, I also ask of all parties, please refrain from any personal attacks. Please raise your hand, step up to the mic. Ms. Zavatsky?
Good evening, William Zavatsky, 441 East Main Street. Good evening, council, very exciting, Council McCarron, you see a slightly different face on the council as well. I just wanted to make comments on two different things. One is, thank you, councillor Fitch, for proposing the federal funding dashboard, and thank you to the mayor and IT for putting that up on the website. I might have misheard, but that there's been no impact of federal funding cuts on North Adams. I spoke to a resident on Galvin Road, there's a culvert issue there, and there's been flooding there kind of every couple of years, and after talking to him, he said that that funding had been cut, and my understanding was that that in fact has been cut?
That was a prior program.
Okay.
It was a different program. It was, we didn't get that funded. It was a different program. So through FEMA, we had applied one, I'm sorry.
This is the second.
Okay, we shouldn't.
Oh, yes, sorry.
Back and forth.
I guess, yeah, okay, so that has been cut, I guess my understanding was that was showing federal funding cuts, and that was just, I just had that conversation with the person, so that was off the mind, but, okay. And then the other thing I wanted to say, I'm very excited to hear about the conversation around communication. I think one of the things that I always think about is, this might be someone's first meeting, and if it's very obscure and they don't understand what's going on, it might be their last meeting that they tune into, and that's a loss for us as a city, because if people understand what's going on, then they can be part of the conversation, and they enrich what we're doing here. So I just wanted to make that point, I'm very excited, I was nodding and not writing down a bunch of the ideas that people listed, I'm very excited about that, but to councillor Bollman's point, we need to figure out something that works, that is sustainable, that we can commit to. So, thank you.
Thank you. Please step up to the mic.
Okay, I'm Patricia Mio, and with that 36 Fulton Street, and just a couple sentences on communications. I would commend to all of you, reading Stephanie Boyd's newsletter, she does this for Williamstown, it's exactly the kind of thing you've described, I read it just for the pleasure of reading it, but I think it's a great model. The second thing I will say, I was so, someone wrote on Facebook, I didn't know anything about any of the new candidates, and I was like, how could this be? And I asked her, I said, you know, here's all the places you could have heard something and seen something that happened, and I didn't get a good answer, but what I want to say that points me to at least, is I think we need to do an audit of where people get their information. We are assuming they're watching this on YouTube, we are assuming they're going to the city website, we're assuming they're reading our wonderful media, they're doing none of those, I can tell you. I don't think that's the only person who said that, that I've gotten feedback. Okay, now, I didn't want to talk about communication, I actually wanted to say, in light of the tax action that you took tonight, I want to raise for possible thought, or whatever, is that on September 25th, 2018, the city council actually aligned, passed something that aligns them to the MGL, that they were allowed to establish a program for people over 60 and veterans to volunteer work with the city to abate their taxes. And I don't know where that disappeared to. That, or that state law's been updated, it's now $2,000 of taxes, and at the minimum wage, Great Barrington has this program, and I think in recognition of the stress of property tax on our senior citizens, to give it, make this program come to life, it's on the books.
Thank you. All right, anybody else? Please step up to the mic, name and address for the record.
Aceus Leva, 287 Fountain Street. I came tonight to speak to the council in general about state school funding advocacy, but I am primarily directing my comments as the mayor, as a member of the school committee. The Massachusetts Teachers Association has put forward a fiscal crisis plan, which supports seven different funding bills. If those were to pass, it'd be an additional $1.29 million for North Adams, which is 0.18% of the total funding being proposed from these bills, and the foundation enrollment for North Adams is 0.14% of the state. So we would get more than proportional funding if these bills were to pass, so it is a no-brainer for the community of North Adams to support MTA's fiscal crisis plan. I did reach out to a couple of school committee members to see if a joint resolution could be put forward. It was only a couple of weeks ago, but I have not heard from anybody yet. Several North Adams school administrators have already signed on to the fiscal crisis plan, including North Adams Principal Andy Neehan, North Adams Principal Anne Marie Rilo, and North Adams Superintendent Timothy Calhoun, but as far as I know, no public elected officials have signed on to supporting MTA's fiscal crisis plan. So I hope that perhaps the mayor might consider putting forward a resolution as early as December onto the school committee, and I have a copy here of East Hampton's proposed resolution to their school committee that's happening on Tuesday.
Anybody else for open forum? Please step up to the mic, name and address for the record.
Hi, Alexa McDonald, 200 East Main Street. I just want to come up here and say thank you for doing the Transgender Day of Remembrance, I really appreciate that being on there, and so does the LGBTQ community. As well as that, for councillor Fitch's point on communication, when talking to people in the community, it seems like a lot of people are getting communication from Facebook, and then a lot of miscommunication is also coming from social media. So when looking at areas to support more communication from the city, I think it could be beneficial to look at social media as being a large platform, whether that comes from podcasts being put on to social media, or many other ways, as well as like a newsletter being then put to emails, but also, again, social media, it seems like a lot of people are just scrolling, getting information in that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, moving on. Going to turn it over to the mayor for mayor's updates.
To answer your question, it will be on the December agenda. Okay. And getting back to Lilian, the Galvin Street, or Galvin, Galvin Road culvert is a priority for us. A few years back, we applied for a FEMA grant, which was not funded, this was before all of the federal cuts happened. So to get to councillor Fitch's point, we were talking about clawbacks, so money that we were awarded but never got, none of our programs thus far, not ever, have been caught, the grant funding that the city has received from the federal level. We do have one project under review, and that is our Blue Deck River Revitalization Project, which is under review as we speak, we're hoping by the 14th of December to have that finalized, as to where we stand with that, as can we move forward with the project. We have had other federal projects under review and we've passed, but right now, that is the only project under review. It went through the motions with the Army Corps at the end of October, so we're waiting to hear those results. And it could be as early as tomorrow, it could be as early as, you know, they, they're under review. So we're kind of at a little pause there, but in the meantime, we're focused on other activities around the river. So when we talk about we haven't benefited, we mean we, the city as an entity, that none of our federal funds have been clawbacked, we certainly have been reviewed, but as of this moment, we haven't received any clawbacks. With the Galvin Road project, that is a priority for us, we try to enter it every year in our congressional spending, it is a priority for our next year's application for One Stop, but we're trying to control that culvert every season by dredging it, or by cleaning it out, and things like that. Some of it is a lack of maintenance, and some of it is now, there's so much water going into that culvert, we need a bigger culvert. So that wasn't part of what we're experiencing in real time, it was prior to that with a FEMA project. Also, a few weeks ago, or maybe it was at the last council meeting, we had approved for the reserve account for tailings, and also for access to cities' property that was sold, that was in city possession. We were specifically talking around the Church Street properties, so this year, this year, I'm very tired, can you tell? Now that all the dust has settled with Church Street, we have created that account specifically for the Church Street properties, and once we paid off all of our expenses and the taxes, we were able to put $22,612.27 into the account. Now, to some, that may not be a lot, but we were also able to clear all that back tax revenue, and those past due taxes, so we reduced our liability and have this $22,000 sitting there, which we need to sit on for about 19 months. So the next step, which Capola, Cabola has done, is to put an ad in the paper to notify that we've created this account, last reporting, to anyone who could make a claim. We feel that the land court has exercised all those, but it's the last piece of this. So we have done that, and so we're sitting on the $22,000. If no one claims it, that will go, will have a transfer from that account into sale of city-owned land, because there was city-owned land, but through tax possession. So that's a quick update on that. In my favorite chapter, even though it's not going to snow in North Adams, that was just a precursor to get everyone excited, the parking ban did go into effect on November 1st. However, we haven't been enforcing it, we've been giving people warnings and memos, little letters, that say, hey, just a reminder, the parking ban, so for the last 13, 14 days, we've been putting out these reminders, but we will start enforcing the parking ban on November 14th, which is Friday. It is two days earlier than what we did last year, but in light of some of the forecasts, and we're a little bit worried about ice more so than snow, we will be implementing that. An alert will go out tomorrow, as well as a Facebook post, but this is a reminder that the parking ban will be enforced starting Friday, November 14th. This means that no person can park their vehicle on the street between hours of 1:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m. And we know that sometimes people have a hard time climbing parking, but we've given them adequate notices, so some of you, if you parked on the street, may have even got a notice. So we will be broadcasting that tomorrow via our Facebook page, and also the Co-Rent Alert System, and we'll send a little blurb out to other colleagues in the press. So that's where we are with the parking ban. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor. Liaison updates or councillor updates? Councillor Fitch? Oh, I'm sorry, councillor Shay?
No. Thank you.
Councillor Fitch?
Yes, I did want to ask, I'm the chair of the Community Development Committee, so I've been, I've been wondering for a while the status of the SCA study, that I think we originally told it was going to. we originally told it was going to come in front of Counselor's presentation. This is the route to Overpass. I was wondering when we would be getting that presentation? And I was also curious just about the status of the Sullivan School sale.
Yes, go ahead, Mayor.
With SARS, we had that on our diary to do after the first of the year. We figured that would be a working project with a new council. So, we are working on trying to schedule that when they can be present and come and see the city council. We will be doing a public disclosure in December of what the results were, but I'd really like SARS to come in and present to the city council, so we're working on scheduling that. And what was your second question?
The status of the Sullivan School sale.
Yeah, so, the due diligence period was extended. We are working on the Article 97, which is a swap of land, which is a bit time-consuming, and we have to go through some legalities with easements and right-of-ways and that kind of fun stuff. So, basically, we're bogged down in illegal jerking, but it is moving forward. We haven't found anything, or MOCA hasn't found anything alarming. What is alarming is the continued abuse of that property with vandalism and tagging of mess and pretty pictures. We want it to continue to be an open campus for people to hike and use, but it's becoming really a nuisance for us, dealing with that with regular patrols, some camera systems and things like that. But we're not ready to do the actual transaction, but it is moving forward in a positive way.
Thank you.
You all?
Thank you. Counselor Shay.
Yes, I just wanted to first thank the mayor for the proclamation that was made during this evening. On November 20th, we've recognized transgender day of remembrance. North Adams Pride will be hosting an event at Steeple City Social, starting at 5:30 p.m. on the 20th. On November 23rd, the Berkshire Stonewall Community Coalition will be hosting a Friendsgiving and a vigil at Wander in Pittsfield, so that is also an open event. I also want to point out that November is National Suicide Awareness Month. If you need help, please reach out. Please know you're not alone. It's so important, especially around this time of the year, to know that you're not alone, to know that help and resources are there, to know that people care. So, if you think nobody cares, please know, I can, and I know everybody else in this room cares too. So, please reach out if you need help. Don't be silent, don't suffer alone. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bona.
Mayor, I know last meeting you gave us sort of some updates on Ashland Street. I noticed today they were paving Jackson Street. I noticed Hudson Street might have had a layer, I'm not sure if it's complete. What other streets are to be completed this year? Are they making it in time before the snow?
We will have Hudson, Herman, and Jackson completed, hopefully by the end of this week. They're putting the coat on, as you said, today. That was through a community development black grant, and the sidewalks are replaced, and the roads have been redone. On Ashland Street, most of what you see on Ashland Street is the gas company. On Porter, Montana, those areas, Blackington was our sidewalk project, I think I'm missing one street, and those will be completed very, very soon, so it will be within the next couple of weeks.
And I also noticed seeing some more heavy equipment being brought over to the Brown Street Bridge. What is the timeline for that?
Well, it's supposed to be a Christmas present for me. We were three weeks behind, caught up with some plate, we had some plate issues, and we caught up with that. So, they're working diligently on that, but you're seeing the heavy equipment, because they're getting to the bigger part of the repair.
Thank you.
We will have a party when that is opened.
It's clean out on the bridge.
It will be safe on the bridge. We can't stand up.
Counselor Blackburn.
I wanted to say thank you to the Legion, the AMFAS, the DFW, the people in the city, the veterans who hosted and had the parade memorial, memorial, but event at Veterans Memorial Park, and it was cold, and it was snowy, and there was a lot, there were people out, and I'm hoping every year that we get more and more people acknowledging what's going on, and acknowledging our veterans and what they do for us. Secondly, I wanted to ask the mayor to clarify the tree lighting, because we're not, the next meeting is the day before. So, the tree lighting is the 26th.
The tree lighting, the exact date is the eve of Thanksgiving, so that's the 26th.
26.
Yes, and it was posted that it will be 5 o'clock, but it will be 5:30. We'll be making that correction. It's too hard, with people coming home at, you know, getting out of work at 5:00, getting the kids ready, us big kids ready. So, it will, we will pull the switch at 5:30.
Thank you. And I also wanted to let the councilors know that there's new council training that has normally been held on Saturday, the first Saturday in December, it's been moved to the first Friday, so it is December 5th. Check out the MMA website. Work with the city. Have they got their emails yet?
Yes.
Okay, so you got, they all have theirs. So, you can register with the MMA, and then to have an email, and to be able to register, and then register for that event, and also plan on, again, Connect 351, the 22nd through the 24th of January. It's a great event to network. It's not just elected officials, it's treasurers and finance directors, and highway supers, and police officers, and councilors, and finance community members, and people, anybody involved in municipal government, whether appointed, hired, elected, and it's an opportunity to meet with your peers, to network, to find connections, people. My attitude has always been, somebody else must have tried this already, let's see why reinvent the wheel, and that's a great opportunity to do that, and to, as Andrew brought up, bring back things that we learned. That's how we ended up with the IDEA Commission that came out of MMA meeting in January of 2020, before the world stopped. So, I think those are two things to try and put on your calendar and take a look. You don't have to be a new counselor, you can still go. It's always something to learn, no matter what.
Mayor, can you back off that?
Yes, go ahead, Mayor.
For anyone who wants us to register them and make accommodations for the hotel, Lindsay in my office can do that. I have in my budget in my mind, and we have three slots for councilors, budgeted, so if you need us to use the city's card to book your rooms, et cetera, we're willing to do that, and register you, and then you bring your receipts, and we go from there.
Thank you. Counselor Shay.
Yeah, one last thing I'd re-remiss if I didn't mention, congratulations to everyone who participated in our elections, to those who won, to those who lost. Congratulations to North Adams for electing great people to serve, and having great options, and congratulations to everybody who ran. Thank you all for your service, thank you for putting yourselves out there, and thank you to everyone who volunteered and or worked the polls on election day.
Thank you. Okay, any further counselor concerns? Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Clerk Lainazio, she has an update for us.
Okay, I did want to let people know that we have certified the election. I did want to share some percentages, and for Ward 1, they were our highest turnout, with 680 votes. We have a total of 213 registered voters in that ward, and they, our percentage was 32.18%. Our next highest was Ward 4, with 691 votes. However, they have 2,198 registered voters, so they were at 31.44%. Then Ward 5 came in third, with 633 votes. They have a total of 2,181 registered voters, and came in at 29.02% of their voters. And Ward 2 was fourth. They had a total of 574 votes that came in, from 2,130 registered voters in that ward. They were at 26.95%, and Ward 3 had a total of 439 votes, with 1,769 registered voters at 24.82%. Overall, we had 29.03% of registered voters who participated, and that was a total of 3,017 total votes.
Thank you. Anything further?
Yes.
Okay.
I want to let people know that we will begin working on census now for the 2026. We are, last year, we had 2025 out the end of December, so we're looking at having our 2026 census, first street nailing, out to each resident by the end of December, beginning of January. And that is going to include, per regulation, the vote-by-mail application for next year. So, the vote-by-mail applications are yearly. There was a lot of confusion this year, and I just wanted to make sure that I let people know that. And also, I see, Alexa, you're here, and Lillian, if you guys can see me at the end, I have a packet that I need to give you for January, okay? That's up?
Okay, thank you. We have no correspondence, and a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Salute.
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned. Have a good night. Thank you, everybody.